All right, I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order at 6:04 PM on Tuesday, August 17th. Could I have a roll call, please?
Joe Shank present.
Chad Sexton-Duranian present.
Veronica Calle present. Please join me for the Fledges Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to announce that the meeting is being recorded. It's live on Channel 9 and it will be up on YouTube after the fact. Chairman's additions and deletions. In 4.2, we're going to not be meeting with the Energy Committee tonight. However, we are still going to discuss municipal abrogation. And that's all I have. Chad and Joe, anything else?
I'm good.
Ross, anything?
I'm stuck.
All right. Public commentary. Are there, is there any public comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move down to 1.6, the review and approve meeting minutes. I'd like to look at the minutes for March 16th. Are there any comments on those?
I don't, because I will be abstaining, because I wasn't here at that meeting. I'll make a motion if you'd like.
Yeah, let's have a motion and then I'll discuss after.
Okay, that's fine. I move to approve meeting minutes for March 16th, 2021. Second.
All right, I would like to approve them as amended. I have just a few minor amendments, minor changes, mostly they're typo type things. Under 4.4, there's a repeat that section. It says, and then continue to the high school and then it repeats again. It's just kind of got cut and pasted in there twice. So, but other than that, well, I do have one other. Under next meetings, the meetings were changed from what was listed in the, on the agenda to 323 budget and 4.6. And so I, I'm going to request that those changes be made. So I have them in hard copy, which I can give to Carol to make them after the fact. So you want me to read every single one or?
No, I've read it.
Okay.
Good.
So to accept as amended?
Yeah.
All right. All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes. Chad Sexton-Duranian, 15.
Veronica Calle, yes. All right. There were also minutes for the 23rd, but I, I have different changes for that, so I want to hold off on those until the next meeting.
Good.
And I don't know if this is the place to say it, it's more organization for us, but under meeting minutes, I'd like to, there's an approved folder in the place where we're putting them. I'd like to add a folder for executive session minutes. Because there are executive session templates that were in there, but there's no content to those. So I'll be the one adding content to those. Go forward.
I'm good with that.
So the templates that are in the minutes folder, just, Chad, you're the one that's been doing that. So if you want to just make that folder and move the ES minutes in there and then we'll take it from there. Thanks. All right, moving down to three, appointments of officials and personnel votes may be taken. This is marked for 6:20. So I am wondering if we should go down to 4.3 and discuss Town Hall office hours?
Madam Chair, I was at the planning board meeting last night and they did say that they were going to come. There was some, I think the chair was going to come, so I would, I would suggest maybe we should move it.
Right, so we'll just wait for 6:20?
Yep.
Okay. So let's go down to 4.3, discuss Town Hall office hours. So we had, this is in here because we had decided to bring it back for the month of August. We had, we changed the hours from Town Hall on Tuesdays to be from nine to six instead of just nine to four. We're open nine to four every hour of the week, but one of the things that have been requested is that we close Friday afternoon. So I thought we should explore that. I am suggesting the hours of eight to four on Monday, Wednesday and Thursday, eight to 12 on Friday, and eight to six on Tuesday, which gives us a total open hours of 38. So I guess spots on that.
Where's that on Friday?
Eight AM to noon.
So that's 36 hours total?
Thirty-eight hours.
Thirty-eight. What about the 40-hour employees? Does that leave us?
That leaves us with two extra hours. If you look at the rest of employees, a lot of the 40-hour employees work in other buildings than this one. There are some 35-hour week employees here, so we have to think about that as far as now we're open for 38. So what, you know, how do you shift hours? Some offices can do something, you know, something like this, where someone comes in eight to four and someone else comes in 10 to six on Tuesdays. But I don't know. Ross, what do you think?
I think we'd have to map it out to
Figure it out, right, yeah.
To the hours the individuals are currently working in a whole week.
Right.
And then figure out how that
Fits in.
works in with office coverage. I'd like to check and see what the union contract says, because that may be specified in there.
There are, some of the union contracts have hours marked for people. It's by individuals, by names almost. And the names have changed. So, you know, does the position change with the names? I don't know. So.
I'm understanding.
In other words, in the union contract, it would give, you know, John Doe.
Yeah.
And it says, John Doe works these hours.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And John Doe is no longer here.
Right.
And so the person who is in that position does not necessarily work those same hours. So they're spelled out in those contracts.
Well, I personally am on board with, with what Ross's philosophy is in regards to customer service. We need to be here and open for the best times for the residents. I think that is first and foremost. The, I, I agree, we do need to look at the, the union part of it too, which I don't think that that's going to be, that's a big deal.
Depends what the contract says. I haven't gotten around to reading them yet, but if it specifies hours or it specifies how many total hours we can't just arbitrarily increase that.
Right.
And if you decrease it, then you've got to think about what we're going to pay.
I just, I'm thinking that we just find the times to, to coordinate all of it so that it all fits. But I like the opening, the opening early, because I know that there are individuals that expressed to me that they need to get to work and being able to come here early is, is a good thing.
How do we do this without dumping that whole burden on Ross? Because he's got enough on his plate. Now, what's our best strategy for this? To come up with the right way to do it?
All right, so I, I guess what I could do is I can map the, the hours from, who has what hours in what office? And then we can sit down and look at the union contracts, if there are names that are associated with hours. I don't know that those have actually been followed.
But I guess, so my, my question, Madam Chair, would be, thank you for taking that on, first of all, but instead of wait to the next meeting, if we agree that we want to do this, that you talk with Ross on a session or whatever and just make the final decision, just say this is what we're doing? Is that possible?
It's good to me.
I think that's efficient, but I have a feeling this will have rippling impacts.
Okay.
And we ought to think it through.
All right.
At a time and
I'm thinking it probably should go through like department heads first and
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I think, let's keep this on, on the list, but you know, if we come back and revisit it in September, we'll have some more answers.
Okay. I do know that the employee request was to close on Friday afternoon. Because it is quieter around here on Friday afternoons.
And this is closed to public or closed building to work?
Well, that's a good question.
That's a very good question.
Um, you know, and that might solve the 40-hour a week problem. If we just set close to the public and then I think there's something has to go to the department heads. Yeah. Because we could stay open, you know, we could still be working. It might be nice to have some time.
There is some advantage to having quiet time where you can get some work done.
Without interruptions.
Which is maybe how we work out, when we figure out the right hours for the building to be open, then we can adjust it by when other people are working.
Yeah.
I, if it was perfect and budget wasn't a constraint, I'd say every office should be open 40 hours a week, because that's when the residents and contractors want to come in here, but that's not practical.
Right.
And I'm sure a lot of people listening would shoot me if I said we don't see you here 40 hours a week.
All right, so department head meeting in September. And I'll do what mapping now I can before then. Does that work?
Yeah.
Ross is second with you?
Yes, thank you.
Should we go to 4.4?
Sure.
We have about two minutes. The electronics. Please see that you mute yourselves if you're not actively participating. Thank you. All right.
So this was the result of, of a message up on the board. That was, we wondered how it got there. It turns out that it got there because the superintendent of the highway was posting a job for us. And I think that was probably appropriate. I'm suggesting that if anybody wants to have a message posted, that they fill out the form that's, is part of your package and send it to this office, but they have the chair approval so that it's not waiting two weeks for the board to meet. Because some of these requests could come up with a couple of days notice, even though I think we asked for public safety would not be impacted by this. They could, it's their signboard, basically, that when it's idle, it could be used for all the messages municipal purposes, but public safety should use it when they need it, however they need it, without having to go through the request form.
That's that form that you, yeah, okay, yeah, and I like that, that was good.
So I think the vote by the board to approve the policy and I've got a space in the bottom to indicate when that was done.
I, I have a question. Do we need to have two readings of this? There's a policy, policy. There is a policy that, that says there has to be two readings.
First reading and then there's an approval process for it.
So.
So I can move that we move it to the second.
Do you want to read the policy for the first reading?
Oh, I can do that, sure.
And then we can, the second reading will be on the 31st. We'll put it on the, on the meeting for that and there will be a vote that night.
Okay. So we don't even have to, have to vote on this, it's just the first reading?
It is just the first reading, yes.
So this is listed as the signboard usage policy, the electronic trailer mounted sign. This is for town business only, not for private, corporate or religious functions. Town business includes, but is not limited to, traffic routing and road or building closures, elections, town meetings, public hearings and notices, water bans, welcome home to military personnel, town events, fundraising events related to town functions such as library and council on aging and health-related issues. Precedents will be given to emergencies as determined by public safety officials. This could mean interrupting a previously approved signposting. Public safety officials do not need to, need approval to post messages related to an emergency. Requests for posting should be submitted at least two weeks prior to the event, except in the case of emergency. Using the attached form, sign requests should be approved by the select board chair. The town agrees to loan the sign to other communities for use during an emergency. Okay. I'm just wondering if, if there was an event that the town administrator felt deemed emergency, would, would they be able to supersede until they checked with the chair? If the chair wasn't available?
If it's the public safety, I would, I'm expecting the chief, the highway superintendent would make that call.
Okay.
And they wouldn't have to involve us.
Yeah.
All right.
I mean, it's intended to be a public safety sign. When it's idle, we can use it for other
Or events and things like that.
Yeah. And then attached to is the request for use for the town electric signboard with all the pertinent information that's requested and then approval signatures.
All right. So we will put this on the agenda for August 31st and we will vote next time. Have a second reading and vote. Right, it is 6:21. So I'm looking for planning board, I see Carol.
Beth is there. Carol is there. I thought Lance was going to be here, I don't see Lance.
Um, we need a quorum to open the public meeting, correct? The joint meeting with the plan.
If it's a joint meeting, Beth is not a member, so it's just Carol. And so they posted for a joint meeting in case there was a quorum, I would assume. But we are able to appoint a member without a quorum of that board, so.
We are?
It's called the joint meeting.
The purpose of, of the the meeting is to appoint a planning board member?
Yes, they have an associate member that's moving to a full, they want to move her to a full member. And it was, it was instructed by, to the planning board that they needed to post for a joint meeting for 10 days previous to which I didn't understand, I don't remember ever seeing that, but.
I hadn't ever seen that either, but.
I think joint meetings are the same, I post it for wire, this is regular.
48 hours.
That's what I thought, too.
And the appointment has, has to be made between, jointly between the two boards?
Yeah.
I'm going up to Friday afternoon.
Who's on with the planning board with us tonight?
The only member is Carol. Carol, I'm sorry, I keep on calling you out.
That's okay, Lance was supposed to be here tonight. That was my understanding that Lance is going to be here. I know Julie couldn't make it tonight.
Yeah, and you may, you may get all the glory tonight, Carol.
Okay.
Okay, so this is in addition to the post, by posting the vacancy and its description on the town bulletin board for at least 10 days. One week's notice shall be posted of a joint meeting between the Board of Selectmen and the remaining members of the body to fill the vacancy. The appointment will be made by vote and carried by a simple majority and will run until the next town election.
Yeah, so we can.
Remaining members, so the, so the, so the, you could have a case where you don't have a quorum of the
Of the others, right. Okay. So then we are good to go. All right. So we are not going to call the planning board to get my scene up again. And so is Julie present?
Julie is not going to be present tonight, she had prior commitments with her son.
Okay.
All right, we're striking 100 here.
So I have questions for her. So all right, so Carol, tell us about Julie.
Um, she's been, she's been acting as an associate member for a couple of months now. I believe, Chad, I could be mistaken, but I believe she's an attorney.
Yes.
I'm not sure what kind of attorney. She seems very capable and very knowledgeable. I think she'd be a great asset to the planning board.
And you did say she's been working with you guys for a few months, is that correct?
Yes. She's been an associate member now for a few months.
So I guess if those are this, do we have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to appoint Julie Byers as full member to the planning board for a term to expire on 4/27/2022 or the next annual town election.
Second.
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton-Duranian, yes.
Veronica Calle, yes. So congratulations, Julie.
Is there a vote from the remaining member of the planning board?
For me?
So I think, does the, the planning board member that's
Oh, Carol.
Oh, do I have to vote?
Yes, you do.
Okay, Carol Hoffs says yes.
Thank you, Ross.
So we are unanimous in that.
We are. Sorry, I jumped the gun, I apologize.
So congratulations to Julie and thank you, Carol, for, for helping us out here.
All right, have a good night.
And also thank you, Beth, for posting.
The next person who talks to Julie should let her know that she's been appointed and should see the town clerk to be sworn in.
Yes. Absolutely, will, Beth, Beth is there. Do you want to send the appointment letter out to her or would you like us to do that?
Um, I would prefer that the Board of, that's typically, you know, typically how we work, so.
All right, and we will do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Okay.
I just, I just sent a text to Mr. Shepherd to see if they're going to be coming, because they asked if they could get here earlier, because they had medical training at seven. So hopefully, we have everybody we need for the Nate, that Boston Medical Center plan.
Okay. Um, are you Nate?
I am Nate.
Okay.
And the chief's here, because we sent out a thing to have the chief here with us and also someone from the fire department.
Okay.
Hang on, just see what this says.
Because we can go down to 4.5 if we need to.
Okay, we all do. Yeah, we'll just continue. Sorry about that, Nate.
So moving down to 4.5, this is regarding hiring a consultant for the CARES Act reconciliations and submissions. So what we had done is, we had, we've already talked about the fact that we discussed with
Capital Strategic Solutions.
Capital Strategic Solutions, yes.
I've seen some of that from him today.
Right, and we also went to, there are, in the SharePoint, you should have seen for Clifton Larson Associates, we queried them, they had worked with Ashby. So Terry had worked with them prior. And then we also reached out to Melanson Heath. So we got back from Clifton Larson that they just don't have the personnel to add another town to their list right now. And Melanson Heath responded that they are unable to help us at this point because they are all the way. So consequently, we had also, we had also received an estimate from Capital Strategic Services. They, the cost their services is a maximum of $25,600 and those funds would come from CARES Act funds. It is a legitimate expense under CARES Act to hire consultants to do the accounting for you. So I, I did, we received a list of references and I called them late last week from Capital Strategic Solutions. Everything that I got back was positive. There's a, again, in the SharePoint, there's a list of who I actually spoke to. I had two for Capital Strategic Services and two references for the individual that will be working with us. And that were, I mean, they gave us five, you know, 10 references total, kind of like five each. And so I got back two from each who actually responded to me or called me back after I left.
Madam Chair, I think this is something that's really important, that we get someone in that just pretty much will take care of all the filings and everything we need to know about the CARES Act money, because as we sit here to this date, we know that hasn't been done in the proper manner and I think we need to get some of them funds into our accounts.
I also, Madam Chair, had gone to a webinar with MMA in regards to this whole situation per your request. I did post the webinar in the Selectmen's area after I had done it, which, which will fill you in on all of what was gone through. I will say that the individuals that I spoke with spoke highly of, of Capital Strategic Solutions and regards to their history on doing a lot of work with municipalities. So I'm very comfortable with what I see here.
Um, so Ross, anything you'd love to add to this?
I think this will help and something that get a lot of money back for town.
Right, yeah, so. All right, so is there a motion to go forward with offering the contract to Capital Strategic Solutions for CBRF MP services?
That was my phone. I didn't expect her to say that.
There is a proposal for CARES Act and FEMA grant support services for the town of Townsend.
Madam Chair, I move that we go with Capital Strategic Solutions in regards to their proposal for CARES Act and FEMA grant support services for the town of Townsend.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton-Duranian, yes.
Veronica Calle, yes. So.
You want to sign that? You want to authorize me to sign that? I think we make a vote to authorize.
I, I make a motion to allow the interim town administrator to sign the proposal for CARES Act and FEMA grants for services for Capital Strategic Solutions.
Second.
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes. Chad Sexton-Duranian, yes.
Veronica Calle, yes.
I think it would be something to do today.
Do you want to contact them tomorrow and ship it off? And we'll go from there?
Get us money.
Getting them working with us. Terry had told me that she would like to start working with them ASAP. Because if there is any monies that have to be recharacterized in order to close out FY21, she would like that, that process started as soon as possible. So.
Great. Very good, good job.
Yeah, she's got a lot of stuff she's got to do.
So.
They're on their way.
They're on their way?
They're at the firehouse, so they shouldn't be calling in any second.
Okay.
They got the sirens and stuff.
Well, time to get here. Well, time they get here, they can't wind them, sign it up.
All right, so, um, moving on. Uh, Ross, do you want to go to town administrators updates and reports before they get here?
Can you do that or I can talk about municipal aggregation and stopping to get here?
Uh, let's do that, so we don't forget it. I have a tendency when I start going down to not go back, as you guys know. So let's go to municipal aggregation, that's a good plan.
So, as my understanding, Energy Committee asked to talk to the board and they had a proposal, and I, that looked like it was to consolidate municipal buildings.
Yes.
And then go out to bid for that power.
That is correct.
And that certainly is worthwhile doing because if you're buying for multiple buildings versus one, you've got a little bit more purchasing power. And I, and I think that project probably ought to continue. That's separate from municipal aggregation, which is defined of when the select board decides to vote to acquire electricity for all residents, not commercial, but for all residents. And basically you go out to bid for thirty five hundred households, is that how many current towns in?
Roughly.
Yeah. That gives the town probably the biggest cloud of any single industry in town as far as amount of power. And it's a vote done by the board, residents will have an option to opt out, not opt in, but the assumption is everybody's in unless they say no, this way you get a better participation. Contracts are usually based for, I think currently they're going for like thirty six to thirty nine months. So you don't get the seasonal fluctuations of some, of Unitel changing the rate in the summer, then changing again in the winter. Unitel would still service electricity, there still be the ones you would call the lights bar, but the generation would come from whoever this contract goes out to pay. Um, I've seen this work where you're saving households thirty percent on the generation costs and stays fixed for three years. Um, I've seen where towns can say they want a higher percentage of green energy than the states requiring, the state is requiring probably about fifteen percent of the energy generated to be green. At this point, that is up a percentage year. This group through the board could say, we want a higher percentage. There are a couple of companies out there that will provide these services, they would come in and do all the DPU filings, which takes a lot longer than you do. They would do the education of all the residents, and if there are residents with multiple or different language requirements, they would provide all of this in languages for your residents, explaining the benefit of these programs. The one we did in the southeast region, we did for twenty three communities, we saved the region fifteen million dollars for six months. Now, when you divide that by number of households, we're talking a hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars maybe over a year for a household.
Locked out, excuse me.
But there's, I think, I was excited about this because there's very few things the board can vote for that actually reduce money for residents. You can talk about cutting expenses and maybe not increasing their taxes as much, but this is actually a reduction in their monthly bills if they participate. And the companies that do this, they know when to go to bid. Sometimes they can combine you with other towns, so they're bidding some better. So we did one for twenty three communities.
So, my question is, if it's for all the households, can we also include the municipal buildings in that or is that technically a different?
It's a different rate structure.
Okay.
Probably get a better rate going out for municipal bid than you would for the residence business.
Okay.
There's residence, municipal, there's, um, commercial and industrial that are different rate structures. So commercial and industrial has a much better rate structure than residential. Except, you might be able to actually open that because you have so many households bidding.
Now, the, 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 the main thing, uh, that I hear from, from a lot of residents is basically this will stabilize the pricing a lot more than where it is now. So the main, um, uh, concern that I hear from our residents here in town is that one month it's this price and the next month it's like a huge amount. So this will stabilize the price, which I think is important. Um, but number two, it's more of a long-term thing from what I'm understanding is that it's not just, you know, a few months, this is, this is thirty six months, did you say?
The, the quotes now, apparently the bids are going out for like thirty eight, thirty nine months, but more or less three years. I think a couple of the bids at one company did, they found the market has changed and they did a one-year bid. But these are experts in how to do this and they, and it's more than just being a broker to buy power, which is sort of what the combining the town buildings would do. This is all the education process that has to be done to tell the public what's happening.
Correct.
And the extensive filing that has to be done at DPU.
Okay.
So will all the bills still be coming from Unitel?
Yes.
And just will be just getting the discount on the power itself?
Your bill consists of two parts, two main parts. There's the generation costs, which we're talking about bidding, and there's the distribution costs. That's still the same. And again, if the power goes out, you still call Unitel like you did before, it's still there, truck service and everything, they're just buying their power. After the deregulation, the utility companies don't produce electricity. Unitel, Eversource, National Grid, they just distribute it. When they buy from whoever they think is best, I believe through municipal aggregation, we can get a better cost of the generation. And.
Pass the savings on to the residents.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
And the cost of, the cost of these firms that do this, they charge a tenth of one percent, um, per kilowatt. And that's very, that's in the bill and that'll be in the number that they see. So no one pays them separately, it's part of the electric bill. When the bids come in, the town has the prerogative to reject them. So it's almost no risk. The company does most of the work. What might be appropriate for the select board to do is to vote to ask the Energy Committee to pursue, to pursue municipal aggregation. And I can help them with that process. Electricity purchase is exempt from procurement laws, they don't have to do a formal RFP. They might just call in a couple of the leading companies and have each of them pitch how they do it. Energy Committee can make recommendations, the Selectmen would then vote at some point to select them. And then it would become a warrant article to, for the voters to authorize the Selectmen to go to bid for electricity. I think you can do it.
So what, what I'd like to do is, um, talk to Brent, to the Energy Committee, I'm the liaison for Energy. I'd like to talk to them, um, and, uh, see, um, tell them what we're thinking, because this is a, another charge to them. And, uh, and go from there. So maybe, um, vote at the next meeting about this. I'll tell them to watch what you just said.
Well, I'd be glad to talk to them individually or go to one of their meetings.
Because I'd like to put them on the thirty first meeting.
Well, they aren't planning to meet until, I, I did have an email back and forth with Brent and because of vacations and it being the end of summer and people, you know, they've, and they've had a lot to do with the grant that they just got, the green communities, et cetera, all of that. Um, and bringing forward the municipal aggregation. They don't want to meet until after Labor Day. So, but they might be interested in coming in to meet you, Ross, and talk to you, so individually between now. So I'm thinking the September, is it the seventeenth? Is it the fourteenth? The September meeting?
The meeting on the fourteenth.
Is it the fourteenth? Um, that's the, oh, I have next meeting on here, I usually put them. That would be, um, the next, the time that I would put them on.
Madam Chair, can we maybe just come back to this in a little bit because I do believe the fire department has fire department training that I think the EMTs have to be at at seven PM, if that's any way possible, that we could get him back for the training that they have scheduled? Is that appropriate?
Yeah, and actually, our next meeting is the twenty first, we're talking about that.
Twenty first.
Let's go to, um.
Thirty first, thirty first.
Our next meeting is the thirty first of August, the twenty first of September.
The holiday.
We've been doing first and third, and so we skipped the first week, which is like the eighth or something, and it's the, so it's probably the seventh. Um, the fourteenth is the second Tuesday, so the third is the fourteen. We'll talk about this later.
All right, let's try to get these guys so they get back.
They're good, yeah.
Do you want to come up front?
Yeah, do they stand, do we sit?
Bring a chair right up.
All right.
All right.
Come on, gentlemen.
All right.
Come join the party.
Thanks for coming, guys, appreciate it.
Does everybody know everybody here?
We don't know you. I'm Nate.
You know, Donovan Acton?
How do you do?
This is Deputy Chief Shepherd.
Yeah, Gary, yes. Okay, I've heard your name.
And I think you met Marty?
Yeah.
You know the chief. Nate, please meet you, Joe Shank.
Thanks for having me.
Nate, I'm sorry, I had your bio here trying to. Okay, you can, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't remember what I, it's something, yeah, so I, um, so right now I work for Boston Medical Center um, as a community engagement facilitator, which is a mouthful, but basically I'm like a project manager and a community organizer. Um, I also work for George Mason University as lecturer, um, part-time. But I've done, I was a teacher, a K through twelve educator in the past, um, I've done some international development around education, agriculture, and there was something else I wouldn't remember, but it's not that important. Um, so, oh yeah, I was like a community organizer, which I suppose relates to what we're going to talk about here. Um, so this is something called the Healing Community Study. Um, and as you can see, Shirley and Townsend are titled in it. Um, and they're kind of arbitrarily chosen by the study, we can get into that, but if you look at the bottom, those are all, um, some of the partners that are participating and it's.
Changing?
No, not yet.
Not yet?
No.
Is that being seen, Dave, on everyone's TV?
I'm not sure.
No.
Can we find out so they can follow with us? So everybody knows what we're talking about? I guess that's the real reason for this, to engage the community, get the community understanding where we're going, right? I would think that is a projector, but I don't know how that works.
That's, no worries, no worries.
It's over our face, yeah.
Yeah, 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 that's fine. Um, but yeah, no, I've been, I've been working with Boston Medical for about three or four months now. Um, I've been in and around town for, you know, a, a month or so, so I lived in DC before that.
That's how, which means.
Yes, hence, yes, hence the, and it's all asynchronous online now, which is.
So now, okay, so now we can move, yeah, now it's up, people are seeing what we're talking about.
Excellent.
Thanks, Dave.
Hi, everyone at home. Um, so, yeah, this, this is a grant, um, but it's presented as a study because it is an academic study as well. Um, and it's providing NIH, so National Institutes of Health, funding, um, to combat the, the opioid epidemic, which is, you know, across our, our nation, and it's been going pretty strong since the nineteen nineties. Um, so we can, we can move forward now. Oh, back one. Okay, so, like I said, it aims to reduce, um, overdose deaths and it actually is taking place across four states, so it's Massachusetts, New York, which is where I'm from originally, and actually studying one of the countries I lived in, um, Kentucky and Ohio. And it takes part, and this, this is very complicated, so if you, if, if people at home don't catch all of it, that's fine, I can answer plenty of questions. But it goes in two waves. So the first wave focuses on these communities here that are listed. And then the second wave focuses on, uh, the communities that are in, um, purple, as you can see, it kind of moves from, from east to west. And Shirley and Townsend were chosen, um, as a random controlled trial, which is a fancy way of saying randomly. Um, and they are the focus of a portion of this study. So the nice thing about this study is it comes with some NIH funding. Um, so we can move on to the next slide here. Um, and the goal is, is a pretty hefty goal of reducing overdose deaths by forty percent. So, the money from NIH is bounded by a few kind of prescriptive elements within this, in this study. So the first one surrounds, it's like three different buckets. The first bucket surrounds, uh, increasing naloxone, which is Narcan distribution, and also providing overdose prevention education to folks. The second bucket includes, um, increasing access to medication for opioid use disorder. Um, and there's a lot of information out there, a lot of data that says if people have access to medication, they are fifty to sixty percent less likely to die. And then the third is, um, improve, uh, improving opioid prescribing practices, um, whether it be with doctors, um, nurse practitioners and things of that nature. And there's a little infographic up there that just kind of give you a chance to look at that, but this has been a progressive, um, issue and it started with the problems of over, over-prescribing. Um, there's a really interesting documentary on HBO called, uh, The Crime of the Century, if anybody's interesting in watching that, but it kind of describes how, um, this came about in many different ways. Um, move on to the next one. Okay, and then these are some of our community partners. So I'm going to take this time to say, this study and this process has actually been going on for a while. Um, but it was done very poorly. So when it first started, there was attempts to engage in Shirley and Townsend. And then with all transparency, that sort of fell apart, I'm not really sure why. And some of this, that these, these, um, practitioners moved to focus on Fitchburg and Leominster with the hopes of eventually reaching back up to Shirley and Townsend. This was all before I came on board. Um, so they hired me to sort of fix this, that all of these folks, um, came together and, um, they're from a variety of hospitals and recovery centers and things of that nature, but, but basically they brought me on board to sort of streamline things, so people from Shirley and Townsend actually get their voices heard and get to be, um, a part at the table. So that's kind of why I'm here, is getting a chance to, you know, bring people back or to the table in the first place. So, some of our partners currently, um, are UMass Memorial Health, so Community Health Link, uh, Neshoba Valley Medical Center and Emerson Hospital. We also have, um, a nurse and a clinician, a doctor, working at the Grotton Health Clinic now, um, part-time providing medication for opioid use disorder. And we have a variety of, um, stakeholders, clean slate, transition house, um, engaged in, in some of these processes as, as well. And then we funded and helped create, it already existed, um, but they were on a volunteer, volunteer basis and now, um, they're up and running, fully functional, it's Restoration Recovery Center, which is in Fitchburg. And many of those folks have been making their way, engaging with community members, um, starting some recovery meetings and things like that, um, in the area too. Next slide. So, I've, I've met with police chief, fire, EMS, um, I've done some focus groups with some people from town who live here, uh, who are either using drugs or in recovery. Um, I've talked to, to Coin, who's the Community Outreach Initiative Network, and, um, the organization North Middlesex Cares, and many other people too. And these are some potential avenues that I've, I've, that have come up as, as opportunities for collaboration. So we have an action plan which was developed. It's okay, it's an okay action plan, but, um, part of this process is it's iterative, so we're trying to make it better. And we're trying to make it better through actually sitting down, working with people, trying to get people to have their voices heard. So I'd love for anybody listening to, you know, who wants to participate to reach out, anybody on the, on the board also would, would love you to participate. Um, and then, you know, some other things, setting up strong processes with fire, EMS, police, improving, um, the functionality and capacity of Coin, um, getting North Middlesex Cares, which I'm not sure if you're familiar with, but it's a, it's a opioid substance use, um, organization trying to combat some of these issues in Townsend. Um, we've also heard that people want something called a drop-in facility, which could be like a center or some space where would, which would provide some of this, you know, maybe it would be Narcan, maybe it would be education, but it also has some wraparound services such as food, clothing, um, just a. but it also has some wraparound services such as food, clothing, um, just a place to be, get a cup of coffee, hang out, couches, things like that. Um, a lot of people were really interested in that when I spoke to them. Another issue that's come up is transportation. People who want to go maybe to rehab or who need to get some medication can't get there because they don't have a car. Maybe they've lost their license, maybe they just don't have a car. Um, so we're in the works with an organization called Wheels of Hope, who provide and pick you up wherever you are. They drive you wherever you need to go, and then they bring you back as well. Um, and then the chief and I have talked a little bit about this, um, as well as with Marty, uh, like a post overdose response program. So if someone overdoses, um, and we are able to get like the proper MOU set up and all of that, we have people go out and reach out to them and, and not, not push them in a, in a direction, but ask them if they need anything, provide them resources, things like that as well. Ooh, sounds a lot. Um, uh, well, I think one more page. Up.
Uh, no, no questions.
Yeah, no, I think there's another, it's okay, there's another slide, maybe I sent you the wrong one, Chaz.
I have a question, Nate. So you've mentioned you've worked with Police Chief Sartell and paramedic Marty Scott. Can you enlighten us in the community is to kind of what's going on and how is that progressing?
Yeah, um, do you mind if I just touch on one thing before that?
Go right ahead.
Okay, all right, thank you. So um, this is a coalition-led process, so it gathers groups of people from, from, from the regions, from Shirley, from Townsend, um, and, and the folks doing this work in other places nearby, and brings them together in a coalition format. The coalition was just kind of a large group of people all working, Chaz has attended a few of those, Chief Sartell has too. It wasn't working very well, um, so we've recently restructured it in a way where there's going to be a working group of people trying to solve some of these problems, um, as well as a committee strictly for Townsend, where people from Townsend can come and have their voices heard and, and problem solve and work on some of these things together, as well as one for Shirley. And then there'll also be an executive committee, which will be where people go to make decisions. There'll be appointed members of that executive committee. Chaz has said that he would be um, willing to be part of the, the Townsend Committee as well as the executive committee too. Um, so that's kind of the new structure. I had a little slide that demonstrated what that, what that looks like, but overall, that's suggested the new structure too. So, it's your question, working with these guys. Um, do you guys want to just say kind of from your perspective, what, what we've talked about so far?
Sure, yeah, I mean, the coalition that makes pizza has already paid dividends for us. We are developing a, a better relationship or a relationship with Restoration Recovery, looking at our referral process. One of the concerns I had about the referral process that was in place and remains in place um, with other organizations, uh, was the fact that there wasn't strong foundations for it, that were not proper MOUs. I think that covered a lot of the risk management things that I saw, information sharing, uh, what the objectives of the organization were, what they were going to do on our behalf, how we, we were going to uh, analyze stats, report stats. We are mandated through the county, uh, through the district attorney's office to report overdose stats, those types of things. So I've used relationships within that coalition to already come up with some of those things and retool our processes. We've got that going on. Um, more or less kind of meeting, getting an MOU that describes the scope of services that we need. Uh, there's a critical incident management software out there where you track overdoses. Uh, you track i- i- even, even mental health crises as well. This is more, less a wide uh, variety, it's not just opioids, it's not just a substance abuse that actually process already to uh, mental health crises as well. Uh, documents those things and tracks them. And even from that software, you can track follow-ups. And then you can actually gain success levels in what has been done. Uh, so we can look back and kind of do a year over year, even quarter over quarter. Uh, so I've, I've actually had a meeting this morning about that. Uh, we, on the community level, we want to streamline those referrals. I figured the best course of action for immediate aid was to develop something that might, met my uh, criteria, and then bring it to Chief Boy and see what he thought, uh, whether or not, because the, the referrals could come from us, they could come from EMS. There is this cross pollination that we have. Oftentimes, we would get dispatched to something the fire department knows nothing about. They would get dispatched, I'm moving Bureau out of the way so you can get ambulance in, but other than that, we have nothing to do with the case. So having a point of contact there that can work with point of contact, the police department can actually kind of streamline that so we can make sure that a referral gets made uh, into a proper place. One of the things I'm cautious of with referrals is we set up that relationship. So I want to make sure that any sort of referrals are made, they're made to a place that is certified or licensed or whatever the terminology may be in their respective line of work. So those are the things I'm dealing with on an administrative level. Um, so at this point, we have internally a process review set up with our uh, supervisors set up for the next week or the week after, I think it's next week actually, uh, where we look at our own internal documentation. Now, we're gathering statistics, and we do so in a manner that we, we have to sanitize them. Uh, we don't want names, we don't want, you know, it's demographic information only kind of thing. So we're looking at our internal processes, going to re-meet with Restoration uh, and see whether or not that can work and then developing a more streamlined process to refer. Once I iron that all out, I'll meet, meet with Chief Boy and say, this is what I have for a process. If you can get as close to that as possible for ease of purpose, purpose and efficiency, uh, it's a kind of a one-stop shop, you know, kind of turnkey operation. So that's how I've used this coalition that's the need, I said, I've attended a number of the meetings trying to um, trying to utilize the grant and the grant fundings in a way that just doesn't deal with acute issues now, but that lays a foundation that if the grant money goes away, we leave an infrastructure behind and we can actually either find an alternative funding sources to keep going, or whether or not we can continue them in a different manner. Uh, but it doesn't seem right to develop a, a process that involves external communities, and then the grant money goes, we're still left with our internal Townsend kind of uh, foundation system in place. So I'm trying to piggyback that and utilize the opportunity for the coalition, uh, both in resources and monetary, but also the relationships, uh, to make sure when that goes away, that that structure remains in place. Yeah, so that's, I, I found that to be incredibly helpful. Uh, so I've got a bunch of work to do on my end, and then I will meet with the fire chief and, uh, with Marty then to see how we can kind of collaborate.
So Marty, what have you been on the paramedic side? You run that program. So what's the fire department's take on this?
So I've talked to Nate, and we've had some good conversations. On, on our end of it, we respond to an overdose, and if they're awake when we get there, or if we have to use Narcan or revive them, and they don't want to go to the hospital, that's where we have, it's kind of like, they have the right to refuse. So anybody that's awake and alert, uh, has the right to refuse transport to a hospital. Ultimately, that's where we'd like them to go, because when they overdose, um, depending on what they took and how much they took, once they've been revived, they can, they can go back in to be unresponsive. So we'd ultimately like them to get to the hospital, and where the hospital uh, continues medical care, and then maybe makes a referral to a recovery center. Um, but our end is when they don't want to go, right now, we don't have anything like, it's like, okay, they signed a refusal and we're gone. And if there's nobody there with them, they could become unresponsive and die.
So this program, you would have that option, as the chief said, you'd have someplace to refer someone to, to keep things better for the, the person or persons.
Right, so, and there is actually a new protocol for OMS that puts out our rules and regulations, is where we can leave Narcan behind. So you can leave a kit with Narcan and literature on a recommendation for a recovery center, uh, some contact information for people to talk to. Um, our challenge with that was, and the Narcan itself uh, is fairly expensive. It's like a hundred and fifteen dollars for two doses. Uh, we've been lucky, um, us and the police department have been lucky to get our Narcan for the last two and a half years through the Middlesex County DA's office at no cost.
At no cost, okay.
Um, which has saved us, I think I figured out last Monday, it's, it's saved us over fifteen thousand dollars over the last two and a half years.
Wow.
Um, if that goes away, then ultimately we'd have to find the funding to, to have Narcan. But it's, it's the kits, to put together the kit to leave behind, we have to have a, a protocol in place for the department um, that says what we would, we would do, and we have to have our medical director, who is on board already. He's, he's on board with it, he'll work with us to put the, to put the policy in place. We just have to have, we have to figure out what it goes in the kit, obviously it's Narcan. But then we want to give them useful information. Uh, and that's what the feedback that we've gotten is that they don't know who to talk to, you know. Uh, the hospital does do referrals. Um, sometimes when we bring somebody to the hospital after we've woken them up for overdose, they're not always in the best of moods. Um, a lot of times, they leave the hospital, sometimes even before we leave. So we bring them to the hospital, they get there, and if they don't want to stay, they sign out and they leave. Sometimes they're, they hit the street before we leave. So it's, we want to, if we're going to leave a kid behind, we want to give them useful information to be able to talk to somebody if they want to about getting into recovery.
And that's where Nate, this program comes in. Your organization, you'll get, be funded through grants to be able to supply them all the literature, everything that they would need, is that
Yep, so what we're working, yeah, part of it is like providing the opportunities, you know, for restoration recovery is kind of right now is a hub. So they send folks there, they have a wide network of, of other um, spaces, institutions, detoxes, rehabs, medication for opioid use disorder, they can send them to any place that that person needs or wants to go. So it's a really, um, it's like a one-stop shop for a lot of this stuff, which is great. They also um, will be developing a resource guide too, which is um, pretty. And, and um, Tara Rivera, I, she, she said I can share her, her information if anybody's interested. She works at um, Recovery Centers for Amer- of America, and she's, she's incredible, and she provides a lot of the, the guidance and support for some of this as well.
And then she, I think Cap Scott brought up two important things I wanted to make sure I doubled back on. One is, we keep his, his uh, his statement kind of centered on the patient, centered on the person. I'm having the medical episode, one of the things that we find is that it's the people that surround that person are that are often just as important in, in the process of recovery. So that gift bag, uh, that bag that we're leaving behind, it's just important that mom, dad, the spouse, girlfriend or boyfriend is educated and met with and understands this journey they're on. Um, and that outreach and in talking to Restoration Recovery is critical to their approach to it. It's not just making outreach with uh, the patient, it's also we, we, we can outreach with the extended family sometimes that can exacerbate these issues or help. Um, the other thing I'd like to, to touch on is, is it's important, uh, as part of this grant is the outreach and the communication that we're making. We're talking about a lot of grant funding, talking about expenses that are not going to go away when the grant funding goes away. And I think it's important to have these conversations as a society, and certainly as a community here in Townsend, that when these grants go away, we still need uh, the resources that we will then become accustomed to. Uh, so there's a bit of sticker shock when that happens, so it's easy for, to, to start discussing that stuff now as we walk a little bit closer to that. Marty is, is exactly correct, I mean, we have not had any costs at all for our Narcan in the entire time that I've been involved in it. But that's going to come to an end, it's a question about that, it's just a matter of when, uh, you know, the old Thatcher saying, eventually you run out of other people's money. But we're going to get there, so I do think it's important in coming upon us as leaders to, to make sure that this issue stays alive in people's minds, so that when the costs do hit, um, it's not out of the blue and the need for it has already been well, well defined.
Now, part of the reason why I'm involved in it, um, i- is something that Nate and I have talked about, is the sustainability of this, and that's, that's really my main focus. Um, with uh, getting a solid plan in place, when we do move forward, when we have to move forward, we'll be able to have it documented and provide the information to be able to get if it's grants or, you know, to, to continue, that's number one. Number two, I have a major concern because I am a licensed professional in this field. And my major concern right now is the percentages of overdoses that are increasing right now as we speak because of COVID. Um, the uh, mental health issues involved with um, anxiety and depression has increased thirty-seven percent over the past two months. Um, I'm sure your calls for mental health have increased in the, in the last few months. Um, there's uh, uh, new studies that actually, we were talking about it today at, at my own job. Uh, they are calling it um, stress-related COVID um, disorder. Um, there's a lot of things that are going on. Uh, the um, um, not only is overdose, but there are other, uh, the use of prescription medications are increasing as well. So I would like to be able to get something solid for us. Um, we, we understand all the pieces, and I think with this grant, um, and what Nate's been doing, he's been allowing us to take these pieces and string them together to, to a cohesive whole, so we know what we have to work with, and then get that whole together so that we can continue on. Because my concern is there are people that fall through the cracks, the people that walk out afterwards and
Absolutely.
you know, those are, if, if we can uh, help um, any organization provide for, you know, uh, any piece of each one of us that are doing here, that's the important part. You know, if I can save one life, then, then, you know.
Yeah.
That's, that's kind of a
So have you, as far as the grant, the pro- program that you're involved in, do you have a timeframe that this study's going?
We do.
When does it plan on ending?
That's a good question, so it's sustainable, so my name is there, and then my um, colleague Susan Buckles, uh, she's community coordinator. She's handling some of the sustainability processes right now when it comes to the people that we, the organizations and folks we've already invested in, so she's working on that currently. Uh, it does end, um, and it ends within a year, so it ends in July twenty twenty-two. Um, and that's, that's including a, a monitoring process, so, you know, this is a study, so we're observing how this unfolds, this community engagement process unfolds. Uh, like I said, in my opinion, and I've only been here for a few months, it wasn't done right. So I'm here to make sure from now on forward it is done right. Um, and, you know, the first step is getting people at the table and getting, you know, legitimately uh, folks engaged. The, the ability to spend this money, um, which in some extent has been spent, you know, we have Restoration Recovery, we've invested in them, we're investing in Wheels of Hope with, with Coalition approval. Um, but we would like for people in Townsend to vote on things that they would like to spend the money on too. Um, so in total, um, we have, I believe, around five hundred thousand left. Um, that sounds like a lot, but that spends very quickly. Um, and when it comes to the Narcan, we did send you guys that like, uh, that form to get it for seventy-five dollars for two, which like, is, you know, saving a little bit of money from one, one oh five to seventy-five, but still, yeah, the sticker price is, is a shock when you see it. Um, so ideally, we would like to spend the money sooner rather than later. So I would say, I've talked with the folks at BMC, like November-ish, to have everything lined up and decided upon at the latest, which is um, not a lot of time, honestly, so.
This says December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, this literature that handed out.
That was the, yeah, that was the original.
So it was extended to July?
It was extended because of COVID, yeah, 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 because of COVID. Where, where is this from?
It's, it's the one that looks like this.
Okay, I'll send it, I'll send, okay, that's the action plan. I'll send an updated one for you all to distribute if folks would like it, just so you can have. Yeah, it's been extended for, for six months due to COVID, um, that is extension, time period, but not
So Chaz, I guess this fits right in your wheelhouse. I mean, this is what you do for a living, um, not to delegate more than individual people.
But
But I think you're the right guy for this program.
Um, and this is part of the reason why I wanted to bring everybody on the table. When, when Nate and I talked, when he, when he first got foot on board, uh, this is what I thought that we'd be able to get together. Um, I, I know that there's um, been some talk, uh, that Chief and I briefly spoke about it, but I do believe that um, also partnering with a, a mental health uh, organization to, to also help us out with this, and two is something that we're both interested in, and I think this will dovetail in with that as well. I believe that there's a lot of things that we can do that, that will break off of this, and seeing that uh, we do have a focus, if we have anybody in the community that's interested in helping, we're always helping for that as well.
So what would you like to see from us as the board, I guess, Nate, I guess, well, Mr. Shepherd?
I guess I have a question, I, I read a little bit from the email brief that I got, but those of us listening at home, how is that happening, it all going to be spent as a whole in Townsend and Shirley, or is it throughout the state, or is it?
No.
What, what is, what's the purpose and spirit, how is, understanding grants a little bit? How will the grant be disseminated, and what's the, what's the mileage for?
Right, good question, okay, so I'll, yeah, it's between Shirley and Townsend. Um, but like I said, because of this year that things have been running, the money, which was more than five hundred thousand, it was a million to begin with, has been invested in, in Restoration Recovery and some of these other organizations, right? With the hopes of when, you know, we're able to engage with thousands, which to my mind, I'm still confused why it hasn't, but that's fine. Um, would be prepared to do some of this work fast when we get, get to the table, right? So um, part of it, that, part of that five hundred thousand will move forward to support Restoration Recovery still, and then the rest of that, that'll be around a hundred thousand, um, will be, be spent between the two towns, right? So depending on what that looks like, um, it, that's true, okay, so well, there's a few different reasons, uh, or ways we could spend it. Could you go back to that one slide, maybe two back? Okay, that, that's good. So these are some, these are some potential options if I spend it, right? So we could invest in, in, Chief and I have talked about this and it may work, it may not, but invest in, um, Community Outreach Initiative Network to sort of build their capacity. We could invest in a drop-in facility, um, in town, near town, or between Shirley and Townsend to, to support folks with, uh, with opioid use disorder and, and beyond to ideally, I think, oh, in my opinion, focusing only on opioid use disorder is, is a disservice to the place. Um, I think it's very, don't tell my bosses this, but I think it's very narrow-minded. And I think we need to be a little substance use disorder and also homelessness, which presents differently in, in, in rural communities and small towns having, being thrown on. Um, you know, people search couch search and things like that. So I, I would like a space like that drop-in facility to be more encompassing. Um, and, uh, investing in organizations like North Middle Sex Cares, which does a lot of education work. Um, and you know, even for, if you guys, while we're here, if you run out of, um, money or, or if you have to buy the Narcan, we can buy that for you, for the food type being. So those are some options.
So a hundred thousand between seven topics, if you will, and the drop-in facility could be expensive.
It could cap that. Yeah.
So on and so forth. So I guess I just trying to understand how that money would be utilized. And I think you reported to, so you're talking about your bosses just sort of.
Yeah. Uh, I know, so, uh, no, but another thing too is, um, this is not decided by me, right? This is decided by that, that coalition that I described. So keep getting people from Townsend at this committee meeting to discuss these topics.
So real quick, you only get, uh, ten months.
I know. Yeah.
So is there a committee set up already or are you saying that a committing, a coalition needs to be organized?
There is, I, we already have, yeah, we already have a coalition. It's just been restructured.
Yeah.
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 But we're just towns, not.
Yeah, too. One of the things I, I, to, to piggyback off of, of Chief saying, I, I think, uh, when I, when I'm looking at is I'm leveraging on that four hundred thousand. I think leveraging, um, using restoration recovery in the manner on that I'm using and just tapping into some of that, those funds. I'm having them develop my internal policies, my mandatory reporting to the state, my mandatory reporting to the district attorney, trying to develop that process. And when it goes away, they've already helped me develop all that processes. Now I kind of have to keep it going. The other thing I'm looking at, at least in, in bringing to the table for meeting actually this week, uh, is, is I think I'd like to schedule something where we are trained, we bring some training here. They have offered some significant training that I know would help our, our, our officers anyway. Um, and I can incorporate some of the new processes in that training. So it's not like I'm sending them to Worcester where they hear all about the things that could happen. No, it's this is how you would do it where you're at. Here is, this is the process that you would, here's where you would refer people. Here's how it will be reported in your department. Very specific to here. So I'm trying to leverage the four hundred thousand because I'm not sure what they have on tap for the hundred thousand or whatever it's left for. It's been, it's been transparent. I mean, they're not that.
Trying to be as transparent as possible with the funding. I mean, I, I don't have the, the finances in front of me, but we can also.
So will you be dealing directly, whatever you're setting up, it'll be also with Chief White?
So what I figured I would do and, and we, we tapped base real briefly on it, you know, Chief and I, uh, is, is I, I'm gonna can my process and say, hey, you can take whatever you want. If you like the intake forms, if you like the, the policy. Cause again, I think our risk management and mitigation strategy is gonna be the same. I don't want to set up a relationship with a place that's not properly licensed or certified or accredited, whatever the heck that might be. Um, and I want to know what the criteria is because again, uh, to, to Nate's point, and I think he's, he's open-minded about this. I don't look at this as just merely an opioid problem at, at all. I see these things as a, as a mirror of social issues that run again. One of the things I'll point out about, uh, restoration recovery as well is they do have licensed social worker on premise. Um, did they have, it's run by a nurse. Uh, so they do have a, the wherewithal to do medical referrals as well, medical referrals as well.
If you're close down the road, you might be able to, to expand into that where they have somebody available for you.
I think they do a couple of days a week onsite there.
Yeah.
This is why I think it's important that we have something set up now so that, you know, going down the road, it's gonna be more helpful.
Yeah. And we have physicians as well, right? So the Emerson folks are on ground. We're actually working to get Lancaster Hospital at the table to improve some of their.
Nishova, we have, we have a relationship.
Well, we don't have a lot of munch to do it. So I think we have to make a, make a move forward somehow.
Some of the stuff, the, the money spending will need to move quicker, but, um, the, the processes and this, this, this work of building a network can last the whole year, right?
It won't help you spend your money. That's not a process.
So how do we help move this process along? And the other piece of the, get some texts from people that are watching this. And I guess the Board of Health is aware of who you are as well.
Yep.
That they're participating and providing that hand to, um, to all the school districts and they'd like to be able to have a conversation as well.
Good. So that's great. Yeah. We, we also have, I mean, there's, there's a lot of boots on the ground that we have that is, I, I, to me, they're the, they're the folks that are really doing a lot of work. Um, if, if somebody is seeing hypodermics on the side of the street, they're going, they're picking up, you know, they're disposing of them properly. Um, they're actually, uh, doing recovery groups, uh, in local facilities and in the area. If somebody needs to go to the hospital and they don't want to contact the police or, or EMS, they're helping them, um, get there. So there's a lot of kind of
Yeah.
backdoor people that we have.
Is it possible to add a number eight or Dr. J, is the Board of Health aware if they're making comments about this or the, the superintendent in schools to make sure that there's?
Absolutely. They can get in touch with the chief. They can get in touch with me. Uh, I'd be more than glad to. And this is part of the reason why we wanted to have this talk today because we, we, we need people to know.
I know T E O is very interested in the transportation piece. They, they are, they are on constant search of transportation.
That's, huh, that's, that's a very.
And there's the, that's the wheels of hope that should be able to.
And it's also bounded, right? I don't want to make promises.
Right, right.
Drive people all over the place. Um, but, um, the potential of either working with restoration or the strapping facilities that works, we can have someone there to help people sort out their PT ones, their, their public transportation to get to the places that they need to as well. So.
And we have other organizations that are close like Gamma and Gardner and all of that, that, that are.
And that's another potential avenue is to get involved in Gamma and some capacity, recovery coaching and things like that.
So I think we need to just make a motion to join whatever coalition we have to do, Chaz. Appoint you as one of the main people.
Really have to join because I'm kind of already there.
Yeah.
So we just, what, what, what do you need from us?
The ask is ba- basically just bringing this to the awareness of you all getting your support, basically.
Program. And I think, you know, I, I've kind of, as Gary just said, I have a daughter that's in higher end at Children's Hospital and, you know, she's piped up, she's watching it. It's a great program. And I think it's on the, we as a community need to move forward with it.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that's important.
Did you have anything?
I, I had one question. I was picking up on a comment Chief made. First of all, it sounds like a beneficial program that's funded by grants through July of next year.
Right.
What happens when the grant runs out? What's the potential cost to the town after that?
Um, I don't think there's any cost. I wouldn't say there's a major cost to the town. It's, it's, it's adding to, it's not asking anything.
But if we want to keep this going after the grants.
I think it depending on, on some, like, depending on what it is, right? So I think investing in something like coin or adding to North Middle Sex Cares, you can think of it as creating like a buffer space, right? For some of these organizations where they don't have to worry about rent or they don't have to worry about spending money on X, Y, Z program instead they have the space to continue to save money. It's not, you're right. It's not like, uh, here's more grants to apply to. Um, although we do, are working with, um, our current organization Restoration to help them apply for, uh, SAMSSA public and things like that.
Well, as just in those organizations, we don't have to worry about funding. I worry about funding it after the grant runs out.
That's fair.
If it's as good as it sounds like.
Right, well.
We ought to enter this with our eyes open.
Yeah, yeah.
The, the restoration recovery is not gonna go away after the grant money goes out.
In fact, the MOU specifically, uh, lists out that there's no exchange right of money for, for the service. It's more of a connection. It's a, it, it is a faith-based organization that is gonna continue on after.
I see, I see the grant more of allowing us to put the, the structure up, to set the structure up. And then once the, the funding goes away, the, the structure is already there and the process is involved.
That's how I'm using it based on how much time I'm taking away from Tara and her friends.
Yeah, yeah. But I mean, these are, these are important contexts where, for, for all of us to be.
You charge by the hour, I'd already be in it too. Healthy song.
And the ideal is to build the network, is to build the connections and support those connections, you know, with throughout the, the year, like strengthening the bonds between communities, between Townsend and Shirley even. Um, I think is really valuable. And beyond, like, I recognize that this region is not just Townsend, it's not just Shirley, it's crap in the capital.
And I think the, the other thing to, to build on, uh, Mr. Prey's comments, uh, I think one of the commodities that Restoration or any of these other entities has that they need from us to continue their work is the statistics that we're gathering in the process. Because they're gonna use those as fuel to continue their, their operations. So that is the commodity that I would be dealing with for them. So that is their best interest to kind of get that squared away from their perspective so that they're getting as accurate as statistics as they possibly can. I think it's been a problem historically and this problem, uh, since the opioid crisis has began, that there is no real proc- uniform process throughout the country to gather statistics. Is it a law enforcement statistic? Or is it an EMS statistic? Or is it a hospital statistic? It isn't an aftercare statistic. Where are these numbers gathered? And wherever you gather them can really change what information you gain from them. Uh, so I think that's the commodity they're looking at is more uniform statistical gathering. And I think that's what's gonna drive them to help us even longer.
And the study is looking at the urban and, and, you know, the rural. And they're looking at the rural to be able to maybe rubber stamp it to other communities of our size. You know, what did they do? How did they do it? Um, so I think that, for me, that's the big takeaway.
Right. Yeah, I was gonna say, the, the thirty-thousand-foot view of this is that we are actually studying the process. And for, for me, in my mind, the only other rural community that's been done in Massachusetts so far is Born and Sandwich, which is another, and I don't think that that, that's not the same type of rural that this faces. We're small town, cause you go out in Western Mass, it's way more rural. Um, so I think the idea here is if we can show that we can work together and bring folks to the table and it actually works in a meaningful and effective way that, that forces some level of change, um, then it, then it's taken, it can be taken nationally, like NIH is in that. So they, they're hoping that this works, right? So that this goes beyond.
So is there?
Part of the change that I think, that I see that needs to happen, I think we have this discussion too, is that we can leave them a kit with Narcan and the information and we can send the statistics to the state or to local. The piece that's missing is that there's nobody to follow up with that people, right? So I can leave them information, but if there's an avenue to get somebody to reach out and say, hey, listen.
That's what restoration recovery is gonna do for us. And that's what that C I T program is, is they, you log that patient, they act, it's actually an affirmative process. You need to get the compliance of the patient. Once you have that, they, uh, they gather all of that information that they have follow-up points. And then they actually have a reporting mechanism backing to look at efficacy and to see whether or not there was any a sort of improvements in those areas. So that is what their mission is. And again, I think that they're long-term, they're playing long ball, which is they need those statistics and that efficacy to show, um, so that they can continue their work. And again, most of them are faith-based and nonprofit models. And it's not a profitable, you know, business entity in any regard.
Yeah.
It's not designed for that, right?
At least that's been my experience.
And there's connected to other organizations, um, like you said, Gamma, you mentioned already, um, who would like to be involved in the post over the dose response program.
The aftercare is huge. And in my mind, it's the billboard. It's not just a necessary patient, it's much even more challenging. It is that extended network. I meet with clergy once a month on the first Wednesday of the month. And it's amazing sometimes how you hear the aftermath and the continued problems at places that have nothing to do with patients. Patients in treatment or somewhere else, it's that aftercare. Sometimes I think that makes a big difference. Don't want to create conditions that allow that same behaviors to manifest.
And I think, um, North Middle Sex Cares as well, um, Warren who works there does, does a lot of really great work as well to, to provide that support and family care too.
Well, Chaz, come on board.
Marty, I'm on board.
Get this thing rolling. Work with the police chief.
The board tonight?
No, no, actually, uh, just, just support, buy in. Um, if you would like to be more engaged, please feel free, um, and, and we'll be sorting out a, a Townsend committee very soon. So with.
So what I can do is I'll take my materials that I get and I'll post them in our SharePoint for you guys to read. And if you have questions or whatever, and, you know, we're.
And you mentioned a committee.
And is there anything that should go on the website about this? Or is it not?
Yeah, we can.
I think once you've got a referral system set up, that would be good information.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah.
I agree. Yeah. I think right now, and, and the chief and I have talked about it, it's the collaboration and to be able to get the process set. Once we get the process set, then we'll be screaming it from the rooftops at that.
And so right now it'll be, you'll be involved. Police chief's been involved. Marty with the EMS, but also the fire chief will be involved. So that's, that's a great start for the community. So there is some outreach for the community to be able to reach out to. Some people ask.
If help is interested, John, you know, I'll definitely reach out to them.
So can I ask them a quick question? I'm coming a little late to the game. Unfortunately, unfortunately, there's folks that are watching that, my number must be on. Is, is this supported by Big Pharma? I think the Gamma, the big, the Gamma program is awesome because they bring people in, they interact with them, they give them jobs, they give them things, they give them all of that and they stay with them for an extended period of time.
Right.
It's not a sixty, ninety day piece and you're on your own, then they fall back and then we get the call to an overdose of what they were using before they went into recovery and that's a killer level.
Yeah.
Um, so I think the Gamma piece, from my perspective, from the foundation, is really wonderful. But the bigger question that I made, yeah, the bigger question tonight, is this like the sixty-day program at ten thousand feet? Is this supported by Big Pharma? Whereas, and if this has got a hard stop July first, what are the chances after we identify or the community identifies that that there's some level of support that doesn't leave these folks sitting on the sidewalk?
Yes, that's an excellent question. It was not supported by Big Pharma, you know, through the National Institute to help, um, so federal funding. Um, it will, I think, you know, and some of those other parties that I put up there as well, there's Clean Slate, there's Spectrum, there's other organizations that do this work. We're talking about something called the Continuum of Care.
See, I'm thinking the question's not Big Pharma.
Cool. All right, good. That's, but I.
Has nothing to do with that.
No, it, it does.
So it will stop.
See, I, I, that's a very difficult question to, to answer because with the partnerships that are, that are developed with this, for instance, Gamma, Gamma can supply, uh, some supports that we technically don't have to pay for that are there because they get state funding. Um, this also opens the door for us if we do want to start a program with the police department, um, with mental health or whatever. It'll allow us to have that partnership. So it's saying, okay, we're, we're already with restoration recovery. They have therapists on board. If they need to pull somebody out or they need, you know, a licensed professional to go to evaluate or whatever, we'll be able to do that. And it won't come out of the town of Townsend's pocket, but it will come out of the, the bigger hole.
Well, the study itself, yeah, it was, yeah, which is, I think it's important to know.
And where the services existed, if the coalition, right, I've been able to tap into already existing social disruption. I do tap into one Big Pharma grant. Uh, we have a mid-box at a police station for unwanted and unused prescription on medications that Big Pharma pays to have, uh, removed every time. As part of a grant that we have.
I've nothing to do with this.
Mid-projekt does not have to do with the, uh, in a case, well, we do have that at the station and we do it cost-free because we are, we are all that are great, uh, funded by Big Pharma.
I'm good, I'm good. Well, Nate, thank you for your time. Great presentation.
Appreciate it.
Chief, I'd like to thank you for coming in. Marty, Deputy Chief Shepherd. Let's just move forward and do the best we can for the community.
Great.
And keep up your good work, gentlemen.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Marty, thank you very much. Chief, Mr. Shepherd, thank you. Good afternoon, I like.
Uh, so we were on municipal aggregation.
Sorry to cut you off on that one.
So moving, moving on to the board.
I think it's down to the board asking the energy committee to look into municipal aggregation and come back to you when they're ready. Whether yes, no, or whatever they want to do.
I think I'm gonna talk to, to Brent.
And I think. I want to talk to the board, um, so we're ready to help them answer questions or.
All right. I, I have next steps. Ask the energy committee to pursue. And I wrote except from procurement costs. That's what I wrote down. So, all right. So I'll talk to Brent and then we'll put this on the August thirty-first or depending on, or September. All right. Looking down, town administrators, updates.
Um, a couple of things. Um, at your last meeting, there was, the board had a discussion about how to get the ceremony, ceremonial flags on the main street. Um, I had a meeting with highway, uh, fire, the parks and rec. Um I had a meeting with highway, uh fire, the parks and rec. Basically, the solution is highway's going to provide a six wheel truck, um the flag committee will have someone ride along the back of that truck and pop the flags and the holders. We don't need special insurance, I checked with town insurance company, we don't need special permits for mastod, it'd be the state highway. We don't need to have state police detail and the cost of that. Um highway will take care of it, they have to have a flashing truck or lights for traffic. Do that. So it was very pleasant to see the cooperation between the flag committee and highway department. Thanks to Jimmy Smith for stepping up and volunteering to do that. His group will talk to the flag committee four or five days ahead of when the flags go up and a couple of days before they're coming down. Should happen and not be something that this board has to worry about.
Well, thank you for your input on that, et cetera, a lot of headaches for the community.
I'm looking forward to being here for the next holiday when the flags are up. We've already talked about the sign use policy, I think that's something that simplifies that. Uh eighty-five Tyler Road, um is a follow up on a letter the board sent out earlier. Um due to a number of unlicensed vehicles. The person who was renting that space came to talk to me last week, saying his three day deadline is coming. Said he'd made some improvements. I asked the police, went out and checked, and I said, yes, there's evidence that he'd been making some effort. So I was willing to grant him an extension. Um he said he could have it done probably by next weekend, but I gave him until twenty ninth, so.
And I see that letter and the name on there is a reputable business person, very, you know, so he'll he'll do what he says and that's really good.
Well, I mean, I think it's important that something happened, but I think it's also, you know, appropriate for the boards if we have some flexibility if they're working and making progress.
Absolutely.
And that's why I asked the chief to send someone out to look at that. Um I was approached by the water department uh this week. There's some problems down Greeley Road off of Main Street where there's a water main that needs to be replaced because it's potentially a hundred years old or something. And it's complicated because it runs through the basement of a private residence. Water department has a pretty detailed plan on how to reroute that water line. So I told them I would help them with procurement. It it is urgent that it be fixed, but it's not technically an emergency for procurement basis. So they do have to go out for procurement. But um we think we can move that quickly. I think it's possible they could be able to start the work. Assuming the board awards the contract mid-September, they could start end of the month, September or October.
Did you talk at all to the Board of Water Commissioners?
I have not talked to the Water Commission Board, I talked to the superintendent.
Right, I I I know that this is something that we're working on with town council as well. We've already had a meeting with town council, we have another one coming up. Um I believe that the water superintendent acted a little prematurely here. Um I did get in contact with um the chair to the Board of Water Commissioners. Um the um what is planned is that um they want an uh an engineer with stamped plans um before they actually go forward to the procurement process. Uh the main thing is that we needed to clear it through um town council because there are some legal issues that we need to wrangle through. On so, uh you know, the um the water commissioners want to be able to see the full scope of 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 the issues before anything moves forward on that.
Well, that's good information because mine is saying is the water commissioners phoned, this was an emergency and wanted to go out to bid immediately.
So I think in moving.
Select, actually select a vendor right away. I said, I think you have to go to procurement. I know there's a a legal issue for some easements, but that's sort of like the second part of this.
Right, but the water superintendent is not working. The water superintendent needs to get their instructions from the, from what I understand is the Board of Commissioners is the one that would should be approaching you or in the board as not the water, the superintendent. That's what I was told by the chair. So the chair of the um the the commissioners need to be able to meet about the the whatever you, whatever process was shown, they need to approve that before it moves forward.
I'll gladly talk to them.
And that's that's my main concern because I, we've had some issues in the past and I want to make sure that the water commissioners are the ones that are in control of it.
I was rushing to get this out, so it's it's the um central register by tomorrow.
Right, I understand that, but it's the the water commissioners wanted and and it what was discussed, we had a walkthrough on Friday and what was discussed was that um everything was going to be put on hold until the water commissioner and myself can can meet with town council.
And that happens on Tuesday?
Correct.
So you've been having meetings?
Yes, we've been discussing this for over two months now.
All right, so that, then you should know where that goes and so if that's what we need to do, it has to go through. I would think it would have to go through the water commissioners first and they come to the board or they would go to Ross.
There's a plan, there's there's definitely a plan.
Yes.
And right now it needs to be run through town council to see if we hit the the legal ramifications of it. If that's a goal, then from there it needs to be the and it needs to be engineered and it needs to, those plans need to be stamped and once it's engineered and stamped, then we'll be able to take.
Put the bid on.
I'm glad you told me that. Um let me know what the outcome is next Tuesday. Yeah, I won't, I won't try to get it posted in the central register tomorrow.
No, and I understand why the urgency, but the, this is what I was told today by the chair. Um actually, I talked to him on Saturday as well, so.
Is he on or is he on vacation?
He's on vacation. I'll give you his um cellphone number.
All right, so yeah, I think if he comes back, I I'd rather not step on the water commissioner.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
Oh, no.
No, no, I was trying to help that moves us ahead.
But the chair said he wanted to talk to you and I didn't, I didn't get a chance to to talk with you until until today, so.
But I will say that this is on a slightly different but related topic. I'm really glad that we're ready to get on the central purchase street so we can get shared streets and spaces.
I'm signed up to the central register, I got signed up to COMBIs. Um I actually got the railing wage report this morning for this work, but.
Still be valid in another couple of weeks.
Well, it's good for ninety days.
Awesome.
And we're good.
Did we get on that other one that you wanted to, the smart? Damn?
Yeah. Yes, and I think our council, we were already members, so we're just adding you to that list.
Good, okay.
Um so the only thing I have in my um update for this week is is the draft agenda, it says the twenty first, it should be the thirty first. And that's a joint meeting with the Audit and Finance Committee to review the FY twenty one financial statement and management letter. Discuss Emergency Broadband Benefits Fund. And we talked last week and we should have gotten done this week, but to work out the the pay for some of the people at the site and so.
So we'll put that on the notice, yeah, that's on the thirty first.
Oh, one other thing. Well, I I have talked to um Marty with the Fire Department and I talked to Bob Jones representing the other four unions. We didn't, weren't negotiating anything, but it's a chance to sort of meet one another and get ready for, we reduce our time. So it was a positive meeting all the way around. And I appreciate them coming out and talking with me. Um I do have an update from the Board of Health, I've been checking with the Board of Health weekly to see what's the COVID status. And asking for them to be monitoring this and letting me know if we need to be changing practices, COVID practices in town hall. They got a report in from the twelfth, they they just got today, it was eleven cases um reported in Townsend. Which is over two weeks, which is up from Townsend being less than five during the last couple of weeks. So we're now at eleven for a couple of weeks. Um they continue re-reading the data, I believe they're meeting next Monday. And I'd ask them to let us know if there's things we should be doing or changing our COVID practices, but I wanted to. You know that we're on top of this and if something has to change, we have to change it. That and you'll know about it.
Very good.
That's all I have for today.
I might have, I'm I'm trying to think, what else for the thirty first?
I might gave that big meeting.
Well, those are, those are things that were on the share drive.
I I might have added something in there. Oh, appointment for capital planning from the Board of Selectmen, so start thinking about that. That's what I put in there today. Um uh because we had probably a month ago um said we should start getting that and finance committee, finance committee I think has two openings.
Yes.
Right now, so talk to John Barrett if there's anybody listening that's interested. And capital planning needs more at large as well. That's what I have today. All right, reports from Board Liaisons. Um I I attended two meetings last week, I'm not usually the one recording on Board Liaisons, but I did um attend the finance committee meeting. Um they redid their uh officers, so Andrew is the chair, Dawn's the vice chair and Sue is the clerk. Um they meet on Thursdays and they're planning to meet at four P M. Um I'm not sure exactly when your next meeting is. And then I also attended the Conservation Commission meeting, they also redid officers. So uh Jim DeRoi is the chair, Jen Eaton is the vice chair and Jen's boy is the clerk.
And the new agent.
Uh oh, and Jessica Tinselba started as the new agent.
Can I, and I know it's board and liaisons, I know Madam Chair, you've recused yourself from the meetings that we had in regards to what happened just a couple of weeks ago. But I was quite alarmed as to what happened after a meeting at the Board of uh the Board of um Conservation. And I just want everyone out there, anyone that's listening, that the decor in these meetings have to be professional. They have to not end up in a real problem once it leaves the building. People have to respect each other and for remarks to be made that they're just going to go after people. That's just, we we've got to really pay attention to that because we can't have any of our citizens or our members on any board be threatened by anybody.
That, I I think that um we had started to write up something about that, the decor and.
We still have that. That we wanted, did we, we considered that the first reading? If I remember correctly.
Right.
Put that on the thirty first?
Well, my only, my only concern is when when there's a meeting in town hall and it leaves and if somebody goes and wants to go and have dinner before he or she gets home. They don't have to worry about being assaulted by prior members of the board. That that just, and the decorum in meetings have to be more professional. And they can't be pointed that we're going to go after people. If that's what the town of Townsend is coming to, we really have a problem here and we need to fix that.
So we'll put that policy back on for the thirty first.
For the second reading in the vote?
Yeah. I'll put that on.
Um, is that all?
Yeah, and as far as the Fire Department, Public Safety, uh I've had my monthly meeting with the Fire Chief, the Union and the one person that we've been discussing, everything's going very well. Uh there's no issues in any of the Fire Department or Police Department. The both the departments seem to be running fine and um just let them do their job.
All right.
I have um the Recreation Department, last week they ended uh summer camp, summer recreation. Very successful season for them, um they had a lot of um unexpected kids, um which is a good thing. Um I do believe that uh I'm just going to throw it out here now that we really need to have a little more support and collaboration with uh any open spaces for our youth in the community for the summer program. Um they worked very hard to be able to be um mobile, moving from area to area, but the the last two days, um we all know how hot it was last week and it was in an un-air-conditioned uh building, which was um just not acceptable to have that amount of kids in there at that time. I know I wouldn't want to spend, you know, with sixty plus kids and that kind of heat. Um so I had um heard that there were some issues, um I I had approached um Madam, Madam Kell and her and I together kind of um got things rolling so that they had a cool space to be able to work uh with on Thursday of last week and then uh we had Memorial Hall opened up for them, they had a bouncy house, they had their picnic, they had their karaoke or stage show or whatever, um it was a family picnic is what they used, but uh um I know the rec department folks are very grateful that that we we came together for them and they thanked us for it. Um I personally want to thank Emmy and Bonnie and their crew. It it's an incredible service that that with those guys to provide. Um I personally feel that, you know, we do have this wonderful resource for our seniors, but we also have to have another wonderful resource for our youth because these youth hopefully will grow up and want to stay in our town and pay taxes and take care of us when we get older, right? So, um that's kind of a focus, but uh again, thank you Emmy and Bonnie and everybody associated with them. Um I think they did a wonderful job this year. Um I also went to the planning board, um I do want to announce that the two articles that um I presented for the planning board actually were approved by the um uh the Attorney General, yeah. So I was very happy, um so that a lot of planning work went in, Veronica, you were a part of it too, you know, we we did, we did a lot of work. It was, it was a very long process, the scenic roads and the uh.
It was the um cottages, the.
Oh, the the age restricted, age restricted housing. Which housing, as you know, falls on my lap, but I was really happy to see that go through, um there wasn't any changes, requested changes or anything. And I want to thank town council about that too because they were very involved in in it, but uh good work on the planning board. Um they also are going over their uh uh the draft that they've received from the Master Plan Committee. They have I guess enlisted other departments or other experts to take a look at it and they're taking all opinions and kind of compiling the data and uh helping rewrite it. So they're they're in the in the midst of doing a lot of work there, so I want to thank the planning board for that. And the Board of Health, I didn't, I didn't get to their meeting because they meet so early on a Monday morning, um I'm usually in clinic. But um you know, they are doing a lot of work, like like Ross said, they're keeping their eye on what's going on as far as the uh the COVID situation. Um I I would like to be able to um get the Water Department and the the Board of Health together with what uh the information that we're getting with PFOS and uh having the Board of Health involved, especially when they're looking at septic systems for individuals and have a better plan between the two of them. Um so we're trying to coordinate getting everybody together and at the same table so that we can talk and maybe we can come up with some planning. What would be our best step moving forward with that? But that's all I have for.
Just maybe a little off that subject, literally you mentioned Attorney General approved the two articles. Did we ever hear anything on the child change?
Okay, that's still.
Okay, so um there's, there's a in the other room, there's a one that came back from the Attorney General. I want to say something else, that's the Housing Liaison, um on Thursday, there's a housing uh meeting. The uh Community Block Development Grant for Housing Rehab is looking for new applicants. The funds were extended through the end of December. So if um you're interested, there, the red banner on the website has a little bit of information. And on Thursday night at seven, um Diane Hanson from COG, who is the uh the people that manage the program for us, um she will be there to answer questions. So if you can attend House and if you're interested in that and you're, you can attend House on Thursday evening. So if you can attend House and if you're interested in that and you're, you can attend House on Thursday evening.
Yeah, and that's, that's a lot of facets, that could be de-letting, that could be helping out with roof repairs, sidewalks, septic, all different kinds. Um, if you show financial, yeah, painting, yeah, if you, if you show financial need, um, there are still available funds there.
Right, so I just wanted to say that, the other thing, and this is something that Ross and I had talked about, um, that perhaps doing in the fall and all departments, all boards meeting to discuss goals.
Yep.
Uh, so um we're thinking we'll just do a workshop sometime not too far in the future, but September, October timeframe.
That's a good time for all the boards to start thinking about their, their goals and objectives for this year.
Right.
I agree.
So, and we can meet as a group, each board can talk about their goals and then we can all share them and make sure that we're all on the same page, well, not the same page, but that we all know what everybody else wants.
On the same book.
Makes this important.
At least in the same book, yeah.
And uh, and go forward from that, so that's all I have there, um, announcements and communications.
Um, I I have a, I guess this is more of a question, but I'd like to know, I know that we have a business association that's in town. Um, I'd really like as a Board of Selectmen, if we could kind of get uh, get an idea of of where their organization is, what we as a board can help them out with or what what they can help us out with. I'd like to build a better uh relationship with our local businesses, I think it's really important for economic development that we, we have that handshake with with those individuals.
That's the Town G.
Yeah.
Team, yeah, yeah, so if anybody from that organization, please get in touch with me, um, and uh we'd like to invite you to a meeting and find out, or we can go to one of your meetings too, one of us, so. But I think that would be really important moving forward, uh, because we've got Master Plan coming up, we've got the Housing Production Plan is being, being set with the Housing Authority, so there's a lot of good things coming down.
Space.
Open spaces getting done.
Preservation, uh, open space and recreation plan, we have a grant that hopefully we'll hear about in the next few weeks, um, on whether or not we've been awarded that to help with um creating that document.
I also want to talk to Ross about the preferred grant program, what we need to do to see if we can get on that as well for the state.
Is Townsend involved, North Central, uh, Chamber of Commerce?
No.
No.
We should.
We did get mailings, we did get mail, did you get one, Ross? Yeah, so we did get mailings, there are two envelopes and maybe one.
For us?
Yes.
Well, I guess we'll, we'll discuss that a little bit.
That's in September.
At this point.
Yeah.
Any mailings that will have to be in there that I'll be have to pick up, pick them up. During business hours, there's a mailbox downstairs, I would like anything that would be in that room to be just put in that mailbox, I'd appreciate that. I'll go back to the way it used to be.
All right.
Thank you. Just one thing, I'll be out next week, so.
What, already? Already? Oh, wow, well, you earned it in a week and a half you've been here.
Uh, our next meeting is the thirty first of August at six P M. And um we will review and we have the warrant right here to be signed today. And we will, and we will, um, is there a motion to sign payroll and bills table warrants out of session next week?
Uh, Madam Chair, I move to review and sign payroll and bills payables for next week out of session.
Second.
All this in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton, Iranian, yes.
And Madam Chair and Clerk, I don't think I'm gonna be present at the thirty first meeting, I will try, but do not count on me trying to be there, I have guests that I will be with and I won't be in the state.
Okay, all right, thank you. You'll be there, right, Jim?
Wait.
If I can, and if I can, I will try to jump on for some part of it, I'll print everything up and see where we are.
All right.
So I move that we adjourn at uh seven fifty-eight.
Is there a second?
Second.
All this in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton, Iranian, yes.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Thirty first, good night.